Landon Woods Cluster Development located at 687 Howard World Applicant in Site Land Development is requesting preliminary, final site plan and subdivision approval to subdivide a 4.8 acre parcel into eight single-family lots including one existing residential located in our three single-family residential district under Dakota Town Webster.
Good evening. My name is Adam from BME Associates requesting preliminary and final approval for Beverly Forest subdivision formerly called Landon Woods. There was a little change in the name. We can discuss later. Just for a recap, two weeks ago at your meeting Peter Vars from our office reviewed the revised conventional layout with your board to be sure that we have a clear direction for final cluster plans preparation. And we got it from you at that evening. So you remember we eliminated one lot, reducing the proposed eight new lots to seven. You can see on the revised plans how our clients spread the width of the eliminated lot between the remaining seven. Lot number two is now wider which allowed to move proposed house further away from the creek which was your board's suggestion. Since the last meeting, BME resubmitted the revised plans for your review and also addressed town staff's request to provide data from our field wetland investigation. Per US Army Corps of Engineers regulations, federal wetlands has to have all three following factors present. Number one, hydroic soils. Number two, wetland hydrology. And number three, hydrophytic wetland vegetation. We provided a summary of results of soil testing, hydrology, and vegetation findings. The results determine that these are, that there are no federal wetlands presence on the site which confirms why there are no wetlands shown on state freshwater wetland map as well as on nationwide federal wetland map. The revised plans show now only seven lots with lot width from 90 to 105 feet and lot sizes from 22,130 square feet up to 37,560 square feet. So you can notice that it's pretty close to the R3, you know, standard lot sizing. We also addressed all agency and other staff comments including providing 26 foot wide pavement for fire trucks. We made various easement adjustments that are town comments and got a new road name approved by 911. The new road name is Timberland Court and the approved subdivision name is Beverly Forest as I mentioned earlier. With that, I would like to ask the board if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks. And your drawing, Martin, you know, that new pond is located now, correct?
New pond?
Right there, okay.
It's located at the same location as it where it was with a plant.
Okay, now, access to that is, where's the easement going through? Is it to the, to the west of it?
Eastman.
Oh, take the microphone there, I'm sorry.
Sorry. The access to the pond is located between the two lots and comes towards the spillway.
Okay, between lot three and four?
Between five and six, that's correct. Between five and six.
That's what, that's what it looked like to me, so.
Yes.
Okay, so from five to six, that brings you to the west end of the pond. So there is access to it.
So there is access on the other side of the pond to approximately center of the pond where the outlet structure is. So there's an access to maintain that outlet structure.
Okay. All right, and for the board, everyone's seen, we've gotten several requests and concerns about being wetlands in there and letter upon letter in regard to it. And before anybody calls in, just for the record, this gentleman is certified to do the testing for wetland delineations. He's been in this for 28 years. He's respected by the DEC, Army Corps of Engineers, and so forth. So I think we've reached the point where we are in agreement to say what he has observed is accurate and adequate. So as far as wetlands, I don't want to make this a big night topic. Next step, I know there's concern about the road. There were concerns about the road and the change of plans. The plans that were shown were the standard conventional type of a development to, you know, with the road in the center to show what could be developed there under a standard R3 development. Your choice was to come in with a cluster. You've reduced the size. You've taken a lot out of there actually. And I'm looking at this drawing and I'm looking at the lots to the north, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six existing home lots are now equal to just five of the new development. So these lots are much larger, adequate. They meet all the zoning ordinance and I see no issues with this. This thing has been reviewed by the town staff. It's been reviewed by highway department. Water from Joe Herbst has gone over there with, with town staff to review it all and gone over it. You personally have walked the site again to just double check to say that there are no wetlands on the site.
Yep.
Some of the comments are in error. Several of them are in error. They're opinions, not factual. This is kind of time consuming for, for Josh and others at the town to have to deal with this kind of stuff, but kind of, you were teasing me a little bit, but that's the way it goes. So anyways, along with that, anybody have any comments on the project itself?
Tony, there's been several comments about, someone says that you can't have a private road. It's not in the Western code.
That is, that is false. It is in the code. If somebody looked, took the time to look under definitions, in definitions, it says a road. A road is a regular road, a town dedicated road, or private. It's called a private drive. We call it a private drive. It's a private road. So yes, it is in there contrary to what people say. That's what I'm saying. Comments are made that...
And we have several of them here in town.
A lot of them, yes.
One of them is, my mind is a pipeline drive which is right off of Schlegel. I mean, this is not unusual.
No, not at all by any means. The road actually being a private drive going in here, this project, my understanding is it's under a homeowners association, an HOA. That will be maintaining the water, the detention area, all the common area, and the roadway going in. So that's all maintained under a homeowners association. Each person in there pays however they want to pay it monthly or however you set it up, a due to pay for all the work that needs to be done in there. And generally, if somebody heads up chairman or someone up there, president of the board, whatever, and they'll, they dictate how the system runs. So that being said, we've looked at this over and over. So on lot number, lot number eight, that's shoved back obviously. That's for your turnaround for delivery trucks and so on and so forth, the plows and...
And fire trucks.
Okay. And then on the, on the north side, there's a concern, you know, again, the concern was that the road showed on, on line that it was in the middle and now it's changing. No, it isn't changing. That was just what was shown to show what could go there under a conventional development. This is the one they're proposing to do. Same number houses. It's just different and everything conforms. There's no variance or anything required. Now, it looks like on the north side of that road, now, oh, before I forget too, is that road 26 foot wide, whatever it was required?
Yes, the total is 26 feet.
Okay, so you're meeting the requirements?
We met the request by your fire marshal.
Okay, good. So we got that. You have 15 feet to the north side. Was there any, you know, between the road and the back of those, to me, I think this actually is better because these people don't have a house in their backyard, you know, they're looking at.
The houses will be over 500 feet away from the houses to the north.
There you go. Now, what, is there anything going in there? Are you putting any buffering in there? I know at one point somebody asked about any buffering in there in that 15-foot space on the north side of the road.
No, we are putting in a ditch which was requested by your staff to actually help the neighbors to the north to perhaps collect their drainage if they decide to connect their depressions or whenever, wherever they have issues with water to that. So, and our client agreed to do that, so.
So collects in a swale along there, and that swale ultimately goes into the detention pan there to the south?
The swell goes along the road. It actually bypasses to the creek.
Oh, straight up going east?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay. Yeah, I've been sleeping this thing basically. Anybody any concerns or issue? Derek, anybody, whatever?
Just one clarification. This is eight lots. It's not seven.
So it is seven lots, one existing?
Total is eight.
Oh, yeah. That's with the existing one, the old one, okay. But seven new units?
That's correct.
Originally, it showed nine, then?
Originally, it was one existing plus eight new, total of nine. Yes.
Okay. Most of the detail is engineering detail on it and that's been all resolved? You guys have been working with town staff on that? Anybody, Derek, any concerns? Dave?
No, we're all sitting down.
Good. All right. Well, again, this is a public hearing and they're in here for preliminary and final. We have reviewed this several times. I know there were some people that did have concerns. We do have letters. And you know what? Let's open it then. Want to do that? Should we open it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if anyone wishes to call in regard to this, it's 872-7011.
Quick question. Oh, go ahead. Oh, wait.
Hi, hello?
Hi, this is Nicole Fornas.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi. Could I comment?
Sure, sure. Go ahead, Nicole.
Okay, so again, there's a big lag. We're watching on, through our computer. So I'm really not able to hear the response unless it's directly through the phone. So if I could pass on to the BME engineer, I'm wondering if you could just please put him on the phone so that I could hear. Last time I missed his entire explanation.
Well, I couldn't put him on the phone, but go ahead and explain what your question is.
Okay, so the letter that was forwarded to me on June 11th from BME said that a wetland delineation was completed. My question is, was a wetland delineation report completed?
Okay, hold on. Let me, let me, we'll get an answer from him and I'll get back to you on it. Was there a wetland delineation reported?
The wetland investigation was completed. There was no reason to do wetland delineation report because there were no wetlands found on the property. The wetland investigation including soil testing, hydrology, and vegetation was provided to the town.
Okay, so what he's saying is everything was done according to the requirements and all that information was passed to the town. And the outcome basically was that there was no sign of any wetland vegetation on the site.
So I understand that that is what is being reported. My ongoing question is, I would like to see the report, which I hope that everyone on the board received the document that I sent out through email and to neighbors, which is from the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes.
And on the second page of this document, it says, after a wetland and water delineation has been completed, a delineation report should be submitted to the US Army Corps of Engineers for review and verification. Last week on June 10th, I spoke with the US Army Corps of Engineers and they have not received anything from BME on this project. This document, the guidance from the Army Corps goes on to say on the third page, the delineation should be verified by the US Army Corps of Engineers prior to finalizing any project design for the site to ensure that no further modifications of project plans would be needed to comply with the guidelines. So the issue here is that while BME has done a wetland study of the property, no one has seen that study. So we're taking their word for it, which I think that report should be public information. And I have from, in written documentation from the Army Corps that they had yet to receive this. So if Army Corps receives this permit application or whatever they're going to receive from BME and they see the site plan and they say, we want that house to be 100 feet away from that stream, then that entire site plan needs to be redone. So the whole point is about the order of these things being done according to the regulations. And I don't really appreciate being dismissed for asking you to do, do, do them.
I'll have, I'll have the engineer come right up here because you're, you're in that 20-second delay. I'll let him speak to you right behind the phone.
So again, the US Army Corps of Engineers, they do not require wetland delineation reports for properties which do not have wetlands on. We do that for properties we find wetlands on. We submit those to the Corps and we get those delineations approved. There's no reason for that in this case. The US Army Corps of Engineers just requires that the owners engineer uses a qualified wetland delineators to check the site for presence of the wetlands. In the case, only in the case there are wetlands found on the property, wetland delineation report is prepared and submitted to the Corps.
So I have two comments on that. The first being that you have said that the three indicators, hydrology, wetland vegetation, and soils, none of those conditions are present. The soil maps show the majority of the soils are well-drained. There are areas on the project site that have poorly drained soils and those should be investigated.
Well, hold on, Nicole, hold on. Look, we can't go on all night long with this. This gentleman has been doing this for 28 years. And I know you, you had a comment. You want to go to the press and then now this and make an issue. That's fine. That's your doing. But we have somebody's word here and paperwork basically testifying that he has done the report. He sent a letter yes, yesterday or the day before, yesterday I believe it was, where he walked that site. He's been in there again. He's walked the railroad track site and everywhere else. And there is no sign of any vegetation or signs of it being considered as a wetland.
Okay, I have one more comment to make and then you can carry on to the rest of the question. My concern is that Insight Development has hired BME as their project engineer to comment this project. And I believe that it is a conflict of interest that they are also doing this wetland study. I have asked the town before and I really believe that another engineering firm should go out to do a second study because we truly believe that the three wetland indicators are present on site, which is why we are pushing for this.
I see what you're saying. But on the other side of the coin, I guess I have to ask you a question. Are you insinuating that you do not trust this gentleman who's been in this and would miss his engineering license for a seven lot subdivision? Is that telling you?
Based on my experience unfortunately with this whole process from March starting with soil requests and conversations, which started out just as me trying to get information, the way that things seem to have been withheld and dismissed does not make me trust anyone involved in this situation unfortunately. So my sole answer is no, I don't, I don't trust that. And I know you have to get to other comments, so I will...
No, that's okay. It's just, you know, I feel bad that you're taking that attitude. I mean, it's, it's, the town has gone backwards to answer and deal with questions and so on and so forth with these extreme conditions.
Well, I don't really think that's fair because the residents have gone, it's a great waste to do research, to talk with the regulators, to...
Well, I got a lot of, Nicole, I got a lot of the research. I got a lot of the research that they came back with. And then I go and review it again.
No, I haven't. You know, no one will hear that.
It's misconceptions, a lot of it. Half of the stuff is all misconceptions and not factual things you guys are coming up with.
I guess this guy has come to the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I, I will let other people comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Nicole. Okay, anybody else wishes to call in? I guess feel free to call. And again, it's 872-7011. I don't know what more we can do. I mean, you've done it. You've been over there several times.
This request is first within the last 28 years. It never happens. Very unusual.
No, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. Personally, I'm, you guys, I'm assuming are comfortable with what his results were with all the information that came back. All right, again, this is a public hearing and one more time, the phone line is open, 872-7011, if anyone else wishes to comment on this. Hello? Hello, good evening. Go ahead.
Josh, hi. This is April Schwender Bennett calling.
Hi, April.
I'm at 941 Plumb Road. The sketch that is, sketch first indicates that a half an acre lot was sold in March. So now they're working with a smaller parcel of development. Have they taken that into consideration in the lot?
Yes, April, actually that, that, good point. Good question. That piece was actually part of the overall initial development, the size of it, while that was still intact with the, what would exist. Then that was sold off as a separate lot. So that, it did meet the requirements. Yes.
Okay. And I have to go with Nicole. I honestly think this independent study with the wetlands unfortunately, it's definitely a conflict of interest.
Well, there's another alternative if folks wanted to get together, I guess, and hire an engineer and go, go do a survey. I mean, I'm sure that's a feasible thing to do, but the town, I mean, I believe our board and based on the information and based on who presented it and who did the study, I think that we are comfortable with what has been presented to us.
Okay, well, unfortunately, that's not, I mean, I know that he, he may be good, but he's working with the company that actually is hiring him to build the site. So I just don't feel that there's, I mean, he can persuade one way or the other.
So I would ask you the same question. I'd just ask, would you, would you, would you feel the gentleman would risk his license and engineering degree and everything else when he is rated as one of the top guys in the state for delineating wetlands?
Possibly. It depends on how much he's getting paid. If I be, as far as the company...
Well, I don't think you could pay a person, come on, let's get real. I don't think you could pay a guy that much money to sacrifice his livelihood. Anything else?
Well, I feel that an independent study needs to be done before the filter.
Okay. And again, like I said before, you know, at this point in the game, my opinion, I think, and neighbors are, there's enough neighbors and you want to have somebody do it, go ahead and have somebody do it. We can't just keep burdening this. This thing has gone out. It's seven lots. It isn't a major subdivision. So cost-wise...
Now, my other question is, if this does go through, are they able to put the driveway in the middle?
If this goes through? No, because that, that concept, we looked at and that was under a standard. See, that was a standard development to show what could go there with no open space, no, no protecting trees, no anything. So the question is, okay, can we make this a cluster development? Okay, so they want a cluster. So clustering laid out the same, you know, with the road to one side and the houses on the other side. And that way they're in line and then it allows for the drainage to be in the back detention area, which falls under a homeowners association for maintenance and so, so forth. And it just makes a better subdivision. And actually, that puts the houses, I believe you said, 500 feet, 500 feet away from the current residences.
Okay, I wouldn't rather have the house backed up there. I would rather have the driveway backed up there.
Well, how would you want to...
If they were to do it like the house where it looks like a conventional system or like a conventional subdivision, I would rather have them do it that way if we had an option rather than having the road go right up against our property.
I see what you're saying. But then what happens? Here's, here's benefit for the houses to the north of that. In that area, April, you're, I guess you are one of those houses that back up to that? Am I correct here?
Yes, Jared Bennett, Jared Bennett's owner. It's my husband, yes.
Okay, okay. So, so what will ultimately happen? Between the road and your yard, there's, I believe it's 15 feet of space in there if I'm not mistaken. And in there will be a swell going down. It'll be a landscape swell going down and that will drain water. That will actually benefit you folks to the north as far as water in your backyards. Because there've been people who said, we have water in our yards. This will benefit you.
Right. And I'm one of those people that has major water in my backyard. I would rather see the house, I don't care about the water in my backyard. I can take care of it on my own. What I'm concerned of is looking at a road behind my house. What I would prefer, the house behind my house, if we're going to do this, if we can get this done with the house behind my house, there will still be trees set up in the backyard and stuff like that. They're not going to, they're not going to completely clear the whole thing for a house lot. They're going to leave a little bit of trees in the backyard. Whereas with the road going back there, they're going to strip it right down to the swell and leave that little bit of landscaping for the swell. But they're going, if they have a house back there, they're going to have some trees. Obviously, people want trees in their backyard. Can you see what I'm saying?
No, I understand. I understand. And see, that's, I mean, that's your opinion on something and I'm not saying right or wrong, but that's an opinion which is...
Well, that was, that, I mean, that's what, that's, that's much better than, if you looked at that plan, it was much better than the road running right up against our backyard. Because trust me, nobody wants to see me out of my back window half naked or completely naked. Don't see that. And that's what they're going to see if there's a road with no trees up there.
Okay. I appreciate your call, April. Again, that's going to be a decision the board makes here now based on what's presented. But, you know, our goal was based on some of the other information about drainage in the yards and so on and so forth. And that's how it was designed. See, and you've got an alternative. I'm not saying right or wrong, but you have an alternative view on it, you know, and that's, that's okay too. All right, why do I say it? Okay. Thanks, April.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Why do I say that? All right. Two calls. There were two, these two ladies had given us, we all got copies of letters from them and so on. All right, is, if there is anyone else before we close this off wishing to speak before we close the public hearing? 872-7011. Meanwhile, back here.
I have a quick question. That ought to beat a dead horse. But if we're putting a swell in along this road, is there any concerns about the creek with all the water from the backyards going into that directly?
Is there, I'm sorry, I hear you.
The swell along the road and that drainage of all these backyards into that creek directly? Is there any concerns with that?
Martin, hold on one second. Okay, we'll get this. Good evening. Go ahead.
I know.
Hi. Hello?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, hi. The lag is confusing. Oh, hi, uh, the line is confusing, um, I just wanna talk sex with you.
Talk what?
The, um, I just wanna talk sex with you.
Sex?
No, that's good. Okay, the street on the plans that were available for the public to look at, it says it's twenty feet long now just this evening.
Hold on, hold on a second, you want, you want you, why don't you give us your name so we've got it for the record, okay?
Okay, Cynthia Barge.
Cynthia, okay, Cynthia Barge, okay. Yes, we do.
Okay, so. Yeah, the plans show, the road has increased from previous plans that said fifteen feet to twenty feet on the plans, and now tonight the builder has said a twenty-six foot road. Okay, um, so that's not on any plan, so if you approve anything tonight, that's not in writing anywhere. So I just wanna point that out.
Okay, just clarify that while you're right there. The plans we have tonight are the updated, they're the things that were requested from the last time, they've given us this evening, this evening. They show the twenty-five, twenty-five or twenty-six foot wide road. That request is a result of the fire marshal, has requested that be enlarged to that size. And their concern is if there were two trucks, a fire truck and ambulance, what have you, uh, try and pass, you know, on that road, they want to have adequate space to allow for the traffic to, uh, you know, pass through there. So that was the reason.
Yeah, I guess, that seems like a good idea.
Yes.
Okay, but if the public, I mean, I was looking at this this afternoon, I didn't see twenty-six feet on any plan that I looked at. So, that seems unfair, unfair for the public to respond to something you've seen and we haven't, it hasn't been made available to us.
I can't honestly tell you what, what was online as far as the size, uh, what, what was, what was put on there, may have been a previous drawing, but I would have to guess it was the same drawing, right?
Well, it says twenty feet, so that's why there's a discrepancy. If you approve what the builder says, it's not what's on the plan that I was able to look at today.
I got you, I got you. Here's another way we gotta look at this, you know, this is something we're doing new now, by trying to communicate with everybody and keep everybody updated. I am wondering if we're making a mistake by even putting this stuff online. Um, we didn't have these issues before, because the final drawings, the drawings are at the town hall, somebody wants them, we're more than welcome to come up and see them. Now, putting them online, if there's changes done during the process of fine tuning a drawing, if you will, then that drawing is bound to be modified some, like this evening. And, you know, you can't put it out five minutes before, so, you know, uh, it's basically a courtesy at this point of communication. We're doing a bad plan to make this, to make it, you know, so people can see it, and nothing is a hundred percent, you know?
Well, as citizens, and as you guys being elected and appointed people, I think that you have, um, the responsibility to uphold the code, you know, so we're dealing with, you know, legal items here, it's not just opinions and attitudes and things. So like I said, I wanted to stick to facts. Um, I have R3 documents and I have never seen a, um, traditional zoning set up for this lot, and that is why there are still too many buildings on this lot. Um, it does not comply with R3 zoning, um, according to section two twenty-five, and I just wanna read the end of cluster development, so.
Hold, don't, don't, don't read it, we know what it is, we already have read it.
Well, I don't know that you do, because you have ignored it.
Yes, we have, and we've seen it and we understand it. The attorneys, the engineers, everybody has reviewed this. You're seeing it now and coming up with an interpretation that suits you. It does not the requirements, and yes, there was a drawing, let me finish, there was a drawing showing originally nine houses, including the original old house. That was dropped out. Now, that's how many fit conventionally. That drawing was, was shown to the board, that was shown early on, and in subsequent meetings also. So at this point now, they've come in with, you know, what they're proposing under the cluster code, and it does meet the requirements. These lots are actually bigger than the ones that are there, the current houses.
I submit to you that it has never met the requirements for R3 zoning. Uh, for one thing, R3 zoning requires sixty-foot streets, so there was never a sixty-foot street put into this, and it's not just my opinion, it's in the code. And so, they couldn't fit a sixty-foot street and seven houses in that space, in a traditional conventional code as required by the town code of Webster.
Don't go too fast for me, you're listening to it. The code calls for dedicated roads to be sixty feet. That could have been a, a private drive of the same size of twenty-five, twenty-six feet. See what I'm saying?
Okay, I understand why.
It didn't have to be a dedicated road, it didn't have to be a dedicated road. That could have been a private drive, as currently is proposed.
Well, the maximum permitted number of dwelling units of building lots shall be determined by dividing the land area of the subject property by the normal minimum required lot area for the zoning district in which it lies. However, prior to determining the number of dwelling units or building lots, the parcel needs to be developed, oh, that's not what I wanted to read, it's G that I wanted to read. Anyway, they never complied with a traditional conventional plan in that space. They never did. And it, so what you're about to approve, it, it doesn't meet code. It doesn't stand up to R3 zoning.
Okay, I, I, I can understand, you, you have, you know, an opinion on it, but.
No, it's not an opinion, and it's not an interpretation, it's in black and white in the code.
Sorry, come on, I don't know if she's gonna be all hearing, but I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll talk to her.
Sure, go ahead.
This is the exact thing that I questioned a couple months ago. And since then, we have received a drawing that does show the conventional layout. And that, that conventional layout shows, what, nine lots on it, I believe.
Yeah, that was it.
Shows eight lots on it. We have received that. That drawing attaches the maximum number that can go on the parcel. I went through your calculations when I was questioning this, doing all the subtractions of the areas that wouldn't count towards the cluster development, and came up with.
It's very difficult for me to hear you.
Like, 'cause I'm giving a poker.
The questions that you have are the exact questions that I want, and the applicant has gone through all of the questions and addressed all of those sections in the code. They came up with the standard development, we have a copy of that plan. They came up with the calculations, they were subtracting out the areas that you couldn't build on, which would be the area of the stream, the areas of steep slope, those items that are specifically enumerated in the code. They came up with those.
I wish I could hear what you're saying.
They divided it by the exact number that you have for the size of parcel for this development, and when it was done, it came up with the eight parcels that they have. So the submitted that they do have meets the code.
That it ever was. Um, some other facts I just wanna say before I hang up is there is no such thing in the Webster Town Code as a homeowners association. Um, there's also no such thing as a shared driveway, common driveway, shared road.
Okay, look under, look under the Town Code.
You are doing a shared road.
Hold on a second.
I have been in the Town Code.
No, no, look under definitions, and I haven't, I don't know exactly where it is, but if you look under definitions for driveway.
No, it's not there.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, it is.
No, it is not, it's not.
Okay, is there anything else you wanna give us?
Um, yeah.
I don't wanna argue with you, I'm telling you it's there, and I've seen it, I've read it, and it is there. It mentions private drives and streets, yes.
No.
Okay, all right, anything else?
It doesn't, it doesn't talk about shared drives, it's very easy to search in the code, and it doesn't say those words.
Look under definitions.
It only refers to streets. I have been in definitions.
My God, I don't wait.
I have spent so much time in this code. You look at a definition.
All right, is there anything else you wish to bring up?
Um, I just, yep.
All right, then.
Even in a trailer park in the town of Webster, the roads have to be twenty feet from the adjacent property, and that does not happen on the north side of this lot or the west side.
This is in a trailer park.
I know, but even in a trailer park, it would be at least twenty feet, and this is less than, so you are proving something that should not be in R3 zoning.
Okay, is there anything else you wish to bring up?
No.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for calling in anyways. Thanks a lot. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Tony, I was on Webster's site, and the road is twenty-five feet on the drawing that's on the site. It is there. The one that she said she couldn't find, it's on there.
Well, there were a lot of errors in what she was saying. If you look in the Town Code, and you look just under the, you don't even have to go anywhere, just look under definitions, and it talks about streets and roads, it's very explicit, and it names them, in a, in a, a private drive, private road, however they worded it, is a road that has more than one unit connected to another on it. I mean, what more can I say? All right, let's move on. Um, anything else? Mark, all right.
Hi, Tony. I can't see you, my glasses are all fogged up because of.
I do now. Derek, anything else, do you see anything that, I think they've pretty much covered everything, I, I think the idea of the, uh, the detention pan being under homeowners association, I think the homeowners association is a key thing in this whole project for maintenance of the site.
Was there a question about the name change?
About what?
The name change.
Of the street?
Um, the subdivision.
Oh, the Waverly, you mean?
The Waverly.
Yeah, I, really, there's a Waverly Woods in Webster already, so I don't know what the deal is with that. Why don't you go up to the mic?
We didn't know that when we picked it, so, so there's no confusion for nine-one-one emergencies, or even just the general public will, will refer back to Landon Woods, we liked that, that was our two choice, and we would just get that effect that this will be as it was originally named Landon Woods, and then there's no confusion for any emergency vehicles.
Good evening, hello?
Yes, this is April again, I have a question. If we were to decide to want to get an engineer to survey the site, would that be allowed?
If you wanted to have your own engineer?
Yeah.
I would guess you'd have to do, it'd be to contact the developer and see if he'd give you a right to go.
Well, the developer's right there, so.
He's right here, but I don't know if that's our place to ask him if he wants somebody going onto a site.
And would, do you have a problem if we were to come and have a survey, or have an engineer check it out?
Would I have a pro, would this board have a problem?
This is the developer, this is the developer, he's right there.
Would he have a problem?
Does he have a problem with us getting a, an engineer on the site to check the location?
We could turn it into a gambling deal here, we could set it up that if you don't find anything, you lose money.
That's fine, I don't mind losing money, I need to find out.
I don't help. No? Yeah, that's what he's saying, that's, that's what, that would be my concern, yeah. See, the fear is the liability in a case like this, somebody goes on there, engineer goes and tips and twists his ankles, oh my God, I got hurt there, now who's liable?
Okay, so that's not being very forthcoming, so that leads me to believe a little bit, I mean, if you're not gonna allow somebody to come and check this independent study to make sure that there is no wetlands on there, that seems to me like you're hiding something.
Well, okay, why don't we do this? I, I'm sure, my guess is, if you are willing to have an insurance policy to cover the engineer to go onto the property, to go look at it, they may go with that. I don't know.
Okay, I will be.
If you need to ask for something like that, I don't know. I don't know if it's our place to broker.
I think it's a big enough.
It's not our place to broker a conversation between somebody and the developer. Yeah, really, that's, you know what I'd suggest you do, I'd suggest you contact, you contact, uh, the developer and work something with them, yeah, because we can't, we're sitting in the middle here trying to negotiate a deal. That, that would be up to them.
Okay. So will you allow, will you allow us to do that, or are you gonna decide tonight that everything's final?
Well, my guess, as far as we're concerned, we're, we're satisfied, we're taking this gentleman's, uh, study, uh, very seriously, yes.
So now what happens if we decide to get on, find out if there is a study and it turns out that there is wetland on there?
Well, I suppose, I suppose in a case like that, I suppose in a case like that, you could, you could fight that case then and say, "We were wrong and you were right," and bring it to court. That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay, so you're talking about independent wetland study?
I don't know, we're totally satisfied with what we see.
Well, I don't, again, I feel this is a major conflict of interest, she's the one being paid by BME, and, um, she's also doing a wetland study, I just, I'm not comfortable with this at all.
Okay, Nicole, we've gone, we've gone through this several times, and I understand.
You've got, Nicole, this is April.
Or April, I'm sorry. I understand where you're going with it, but it's, it is what it is, and I think this board is, at this point, is pretty much satisfied with the results of the engineer's study.
Okay, I'm not satisfied.
Okay. Okay, have a good evening now.
All right.
Okay.
You too, goodbye.
Bye-bye. Did you close the public hearing yet? I guess we can close it, I don't think that they're saying one is just calling back. All right, so what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna close the public hearing, uh, bring it back to the board. Turn this on. Sorry. The little red one, where is it? Over there. And move forward here on this. We've seen this, we've gone through it, anybody, any concerns, issues?
I'm just still wondering if there was a concern with the stream, with that amount of water flow?
I'm sorry.
The stream? The stream, uh, that's being fed by, behind those houses all along that road. Instead of having that going into the detention pond, you said it's going directly into the stream? Is there a concern with the amount of flow going into that stream?
I can address that. All these properties to the north are extremely flat, they're like at half percent, and they have depressions. That's why the water is sitting there, right? The water comes from north, from their, their houses to the south, but then it turns actually in eastern direction outside of our property line. Along our property line, there is a raised elevation, raised grade, it does not enter our site, it just continues flowing to that creek in that location anyway. And because it's moving very slow, I don't see that concern. We will have larger portion of that channel very flat, it will be a little bit steeper at the end, we perhaps can put some rock there or, you know, to slow it down, so.
Okay, that's fine.
But it's very, very slow movement, so.
Thank you. All right, any other, Dave, Jed, anybody, you guys are all okay with it?
Yep.
We've, we've gone through it several times, and they're just really fine, fine tuning of the end result. Um, you have to do a secret, Derek, you wanna do a secret?
Yep. Not gonna try to read them if I'm asking.
Was that, oh, no, no.
Motion for seeker, excuse me. The town of Webster planning board considered a request by applicant in site land development incorporated for eight lot single-family subdivision, including the existing residence on an eight, or, sorry, a four-point-eight acre parcel located at six eighty-seven Plum Road, a parcel having SPL number zero six four point one five dash two dash one four. The planning board determined that the proposed. The planning board determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action under Section 617 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations. The planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to Part 617.6b1 of Seeker, and it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates a South Lead Agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration of the criteria for determining significance as set forth in Sections 617.7c1 of Seeker, and has, one, considered the information contained in the environmental assessment form dated February 10th, 2020; and, number two, considered public comments directed at the planning board during concept review in the public hearings March 3rd, 2020, and June 16th, 2020; number three, completed Part 2 of the environmental assessment form. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information and analysis above, the reference supporting documentation and discussions of the actions by the Town of Webster Planning Board as documented by the minutes for this meeting and previous meetings, that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidence of its determination. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. I guess Mark, you're ready?
Mark, second.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye. If we move forward on this, we need to do a preliminary approval. We're basing it on the information we have received. Anybody wanna do preliminary approval?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for the Landen Woods...
Dave, take your mask. You can't hear it. It's mumbling.
For the Landen Woods project. Subject to PRC comments, subject to a letter of credit posted with the Town of Webster, applicable. Subject to Metro County Water...
You gotta talk louder. I can't hear you here.
Still can't hear?
No, I can't hear you. You gotta be talking louder.
Hello? I can hear it out there.
It's very low.
Okay. All approvals shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster. All roadway construction to be in accordance with the specification and regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. All site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster, complying with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency, addressed drainage, drainage, signage, landscaping, buffering, burmaging, snow storage. And approvals are subject to drawing number four, project number 2696.
Second. Well, the road is required. I think it's... You're showing it at 25, 26 foot, whatever it was.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. So, that's okay. May I put... The applicant has agreed to have a homeowners association?
Make the road 26 feet wide.
Formation of a HOA.
And they're gonna have a formation of a homeowners association.
And...
For maintaining the road.
Work with 911 relative to the name change, right? What do I put that to? Okay. A second.
Okay. Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
All right. Not much to be changed. We've got the drawings. You've completed everything that we've requested for a final approval. You wanna make a final, Dave?
Yeah, make a motion for final approval for Landen Woods, subject to PRC committee comments, subject to parks and recreation fees, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board, to expire on June 15th.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth? June 16th, 2021.
Twenty-one.
Conditions of the preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover page of the final design plans. The engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution or final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. A letter of credit to the town for the project shall include a fee for the engineer's final certification inspection of this site. All stormwater facilities will be constructed first. What are we doing with downspouts?
I don't... You're putting downspouts or no?
Positing downspouts on the gutters?
If the downspouts will be discharged to the back of the project.
Subject to a resolution of final approval minutes. Approvals are subject to drawing number four.
And that's it? Okay, have a motion. Need a second. You got the number there, Dave?
It's drawing number four, project number 2696, dated February 20th, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
All right. I guess you're all set.